Right, welcome everyone. My name is Alex Bryson. I'm Chair of this special session on ethnic wage gaps. We have three excellent speakers. We're going to start with Steve Nolan, Liverpool John Moore, followed by Carl Singleton and then John Forth. Please ask your questions through the Q and A box and we will take questions as they come on point of clarification. However, each speaker is going to try and stick to 20 minutes and then there'll be five minutes of questions after their presentation. And if we do that, then there'll be five or 10 minutes at the end of the session as well to ask general questions. So without further ado, over to you, Steve Nolan.
Thanks for that, Alex. Thanks for everyone for coming. So I'm going to be talking today on my paper, co-written with Ken Clark on the change in the distribution of the male ethnic pay gap in Britain over about the last 30, well, nearly 30 years. So just to say that this paper was written under the auspices of the Centre for Dynamics of Ethnicity at University of Manchester and through a grant with the ESRC. So what's the area we're looking at? Well, obviously, there's already a large existing literature on the UK ethnic pay gap that's developed over the last 30, 40 years. And we know quite a lot of stuff, but mostly focusing on differences at the mean. So we know about differences in certain ethnic groups. For instance, Indian Chinese males tend to have a lower ethnic pay gap, even in some cases than premium compared to workers in Bangladeshi, Pakistani, Black African, Black Caribbean groups. And so that's going to miss out some important details in the nature of the gap. And specifically, one of the things we'll focus on today is this idea that kind of identified in the gender pay gap literature of sticky floors and glass ceilings. What we see when we can look across the full distribution, almost at the tails of it, at the lower end, we have like a sticky floors effect where low paid workers can struggle to move away from that low paid work. The top end, glass ceilings, probably more commonly known parlance, where there's almost a limit to what certain minorities be, gender minorities or ethnic minorities, how high they can go on the pay scale. So given this is kind of a clear need to analyse the distribution beyond just the means. And there's policy implications as well. Tackling the ethnic wage gap has been rhetorically a government policy since as long as I've been alive, 1976. But even though there have been many reports, many policy recommendations, many policy initiatives, there's kind of little consistent evidence that they have served to close the ethnic pay gap. So looking at things beyond the main, what the things happening at different points in the pay scale may actually help to reveal why there have been some policy failures over time. But also might reveal, have there been some unrecognized policy effects? For instance, in a more general labour market policy, like the national minimum wage, what's the effect of that on the ethnic pay gap? We might expect, given that there's a greater tendency for ethnic minority workers to be found at the bottom end of the distribution, that lower, that increasing floor should aid to close the gap. So we were interested in looking in that. So given that, sorry, given that, the contributions we were looking to make is to a good sort of documentation of the change in the ethnic pay gap across the distribution over 26 years, so 1993 to 2019. And then from headline results, kind of look underneath the hood, do a detailed decomposition to reveal the nature of disadvantages faced by different ethnic groups. And within this decomposition, we wanted to look at how changing policy differs by ethnic groups. And specifically looking at how the introduction of the national minimum wage has had differential impacts on different ethnic groups. And it's a preview of some forthcoming traction, some of the headline results that we have in the paper. We can find on a good news story for Indians and relatively poorly paid Bangladeshi males. They experience a recognizable reduction in the ethnic pay gap, which we find is consistent with an improving wage structure. On the less positive side, we're finding some pretty compelling evidence of an apparent glass ceiling effect for most ethnic groups and particularly for Black African, Black Caribbean. And then when we look at the national minimum wage, we see some interest in heterogeneity. There seems to be some improvement at the lower end, but only for some ethnic groups. So to look at this, we went to the quarterly labour force survey. It's been taking labour force data since 1993 consistently. And so we have 105 quarters of data to play with going from 1993 up to 2019. And from that, we're just construct to look at the ethnic pay gap, kind of standardly create a variable of hourly wages. So the reported gross weekly hours, sorry, gross weekly pay divided by the number of hours reported. And we do this for both full-time and part-time workers. Now, the latter part is really important because previous research has shown that certain ethnic groups tend to have a greater share of their workers in part-time work, specifically Bangladeshi and Pakistani. So it's important for us to include that into our survey. Because we want it consistent reporting from back from 1993, we chose to choose our ethnic groups. We relied on what would questions that were asked consistently over time. And for that reason, we've got kind of the six main ethnic groups we focus on. That's white, Indian, Pakistani, Bangladeshi, Black African and Black Caribbean. Now, you'll notice that the Chinese male workers are missing from that because we faced sample size issues and the results were not reliable enough to include, unfortunately. So to track the changes over time, we've partitioned our data into four time periods. And deciding what time period was the kind of trade-off between how large, how narrow we wanted the time period, but how large the sample size to get significant effects for smaller ethnic groups. And so we went on these time periods here. Now, throughout in the paper itself, we look at all four periods. But for most of the time today, I'll be focusing on the first period, 1993 to 99, and 2014 to 2019. So given that, we can have a first look at the data. So this is the ethnic pay gap in log hourly wages for our four time periods across our five ethnic minority groups. And so to interpret this, we see here in period one, 1993 to 99, a positive ethnic pay gap essentially means that the white worker on average is earning more than an Indian worker. So we see here, there's a pay disadvantage for Indian work, Indian male workers. But the story is over time, progressively we narrows and in fact turns into a pay premium for Indian male workers. And this trend, we can see again with both Pakistani and Bangladeshi workers. Now, clearly, there's a difference in magnitude. Pakistani and even more so Bangladeshi male workers are facing a much higher pay penalty in comparison to Indian workers. But that there is an ongoing trend of some kind of improvement. And we actually see the reverse at much smaller magnitudes for Black Caribbean and Black African. There's some sign of reversal for Black African, but overall, the gap has been widening for those two groups. So there's some interesting things already here at the main, but we wanted to look in under the hood even more. So if we look across the distribution, we see some interesting results. So to interpret these graphs here, what we've got is for each minority group, the share of that minority group in comparison to the decile wage of the white group. So for instance, for the first decile here in 1993, 1999, it basically means we've got about 13% of our sample of Indian male workers are on a wage below the wage of the Indian, sorry, the white male worker at the first decile. And so what we see is if there was complete inequality between the two groups, Indians and whites, we basically have just almost a rectangle for 10%, for each decile. Any variation from that is revealing some kind of interesting inequality. So for instance, in our first period where we saw a positive wage gap against the disadvantaged Indians, it seems to be driven from the lower end of the distribution here. And we see that that distribution noticeably changes over our time periods, ending up bimodal here in 2007 to 2013. Now, you recall from the previous graph that in this period, we basically saw no ethnic wage gap at all. But that overall figure was hiding some kind of interesting stuff. So at the bottom end here, we still get quite considerable hate, inequality in the whites' favour, but also some inequality at the top end in favour of Indians. And it's this kind of differentiation across the distribution that really kind of justifies looking at it a more broad way. So to do that more formally, we kind of borrow and take on board the quantile decomposition technique. Just a generalisation of the standard Ohaka blindem effort, but done across a full distribution. So we've estimated this using the distribution regression techniques. Broadly, what we do is we get the estimate, estimate the regression process for our white group and then take our observable characteristics for our ethnic group that gives us a counterfactual distribution. Once we have those three distributions, the distribution of wages for the whites, for our ethnic group, and then a counterfactual, it allows us to decompose things into both characteristics effects and coefficient effects. So coefficient effects is the kind of standard wage structure, the unexplained kind of things. So given that, these are the first headline results. So we're going to see these figures quite a bit. So let's explain it. What we've got here is this black bar is the total line. And this is for every quantile, all 99 of them, across the distribution, the wage gap. And again, we see it's positive in this early period. So this is white workers are earning more than Indian workers. But we also have the results of our decomposition. Our blue line here is the characteristics effects. And then we have the wage structure affects the coefficient here. We've got our confidence intervals, 95% done by bootstrapping. We've suppressed them here on the total lines to make it easier to read. So what we see is if the Indian workers were essentially facing the same wage structures and white counterparts, essentially, they should be being paid more at almost every point in the distribution. And to an extent, that's increasing as we move up into the more highly paid. That they're not is almost entirely down to the wage structure that they face. And that's what leads to this positive wage gap here. But what we then see over time, moving up into our later period, is that wage gap is pretty much gone. At the lower effect, it's now zero. And higher up the distribution, we're beginning to see a wage premium for Indian workers. As we can see, that's broadly down to a change in the wage structure. You could interpret this as this less kind of structural impediment to Indian workers in this respect. When we move on to Pakistani workers, it's not as positive a picture. Overall, we see that at the total level, a persistent wage gap increases. And for the most part, that is driven by the coefficients effect, it's driven by the wage structure. There is clearly some improvement over time, mostly in the bottom half of the distribution. Some of that driven by an improvement in characteristics, the makeup of the sample we have. But a lot of it driven by the coefficients effect. Now, what we're beginning to see here is a shape in our coefficients line, which will become more and more familiar. It's generally upward sloping. We're beginning to see signs of that glass ceiling effect I talked about at the beginning. If we look at Bangladeshi workers now, we see again, as we saw at the main, quite the largest levels of inequality at the total line, especially in our first period here. But in terms of characteristics, quite similar effects to Pakistanis. Some similar improvement at the lower end over the periods. And we also see a fall in the coefficients effect here. It seems that most of the improvement for the Bangladeshis is coming from a change in wage structure. But what we're really beginning to see here is this clear upward sloping effect, this glass ceiling effect. Basically, what we're seeing is the more we move up the distribution, the more that we're seeing there's an increase in the gap between white workers and ethnic minorities that can't be explained by the characteristics. Basically, it's specifically, as it's talked about in the literature, is about the glass of ceilings effect.
Steve, you've had 15 minutes, okay?
Okay, thank you. If we look at the results for Black Caribbean here, we see that they're fairly stable over time. And also at the bottom end, really no kind of noticeable wage gap. So it seems like there is almost a level playing field. But once again, we see persistent, in the case of Black Caribbean, and as we find in the paper, an increasing glass ceilings effect. Moving on to our final results here for Black Africans, they're noticeable for the only, being the only ethnic group, we're actually seeing an increase in the gap over time. We see it's much wider here, totally. But interestingly, a lot of that seems to be driven by changing characteristics to what the characteristics effect is much narrower here. Actually, the coefficients effect doesn't seem to be driving any of the increase here. But what we do see, once again, is that persistent glass ceilings effect. So one of the key takeaways from the paper is we find this kind of persistent structural impediment to higher wages, specifically for the Black African and Black Caribbean workers. So in the paper, from those headline results, we kind of do standard decomposition using the recent re-centred influence function method, looking at the available characteristics to explain what's driving our characteristics effect. What we also do is test the effect of this national minimum wage policy on it by adding that in as a specific variable in our RAF regressions. By that, I mean for every respondent, we take the national minimum wage level rebased to 2010. To, that would be available to that respondent. So what would be the national minimum wage that they would be working, they would be allowed if they were working at that time that they were interviewed? And we take all the data and put it into one single pool here, basically to get as much variation as possible in that national minimum wage. And the variation comes twofold. It comes across cross-sectionally by the difference in ages. As we can see here, there's never been one minimum wage, it's always varied by age, but it also varies across time. So once we include that, we can get results like this. So what we're looking at here is essentially, what is the influence of, on hourly wage of a small change in the unconditional average of the minimum wage? As we see, most of the effect for our Indian male workers is at the bottom end of the distribution. But it's matched entirely by what's happening with white workers. So we're not actually seeing an effect on the pay gap here. We're seeing an expected change in the level for both groups, but there's no differentiation. And it's a similar story with Black African workers as well. No significant effect on the ethnic pay gap. For Black Africans, we're actually seeing a possible increase in of it. Though obviously, the confidence intervals are quite high here. So looking at the data under the hood of this, what we're seeing actually is for the low quantile of these three groups, the ethnic pay gap is either negative or statistically insignificant. So it means that the distribution structure at that area is quite similar across these groups. So we actually probably shouldn't be surprised that the minimum wage isn't having an impact here. It's a different story when we consider the Pakistani groups here. Then we're definitely seeing a significant difference. You can see here that the impact on Pakistani hourly wages is much, is higher than that for whites, indicating a narrowing of the ethnic pay gap. And similarly, following the pattern that we've seen throughout the paper, we're seeing an even larger effect for Bangladesh. So it's an indication that these broad kind of policies can have some effect on the ethnic wage gap overall. Okay, so as I'm coming to the end now, just to summarise, we really wanted to look at what's going on over time and across distribution for various different ethnic groups. And one of the key takeaways from the paper for us was that at certain points, at every, at certain points, every group experiences some form of glass ceiling. But it's significantly so for Black workers and it seems to be increasing over time. And we also saw that, like, taking this policy and putting it into the detailed composition, we able to reveal the association between reducing, increasing the minimum wage and reducing the pay gap for Pakistani and Bangladeshis. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks very much indeed, Steve. Time for questions. We've got a couple submitted. But Carl, is there anybody in your room that has also got a question?
I'm just asking, Alex.
Okay, well, let's start with the ones in the chat. So we've got, first of all, we've got a question about whether you ever, at any point, Steve, distinguished between white British and white other. And then a second question about whether there are any limitations around the ethnicity data from the Labour Force survey that could either have resulted in an under or overestimate of the gaps that you identify.
Right, so in terms of white other, we did look into that. And like, did the regression with it and there didn't seem to be any significant difference from the results that we had. In terms of reporting of the data, in terms of the ethnicity, nothing that we considered would be an issue. I mean, they're fairly standard questions going back to 1993. So in that, I mean, we did, sorry.
Yeah, Tanya Wilson asks a follow-up question around that, saying, oh, what about self-employed earnings? Is this an issue for your analysis? And of course, we can think about discrimination and the propensity to be.
Right, yes, yeah, yes. So I mean, obviously, it's kind of, there are problems with that. And we do, we did do, checked again with bringing in any kind of reported hourly wages in that respect. Because obviously, there's a risk of skewing that way. We didn't see any significant effect. I mean, obviously, it's an issue in that, like, self-employed is kind of an issue in that respect. But it's definitely one, I think, probably to look at again.
Okay, Carl, you've got a question in the room.
Yeah, do you want to speak up and see if they pick it up?
Yeah, sure. Hi, can you hear us?
Yes, you can.
Fantastic. My question's more around the integration of these ethnic groups prior to 1993. So as you're probably aware, a lot of the ethnic groups that you've highlighted, integrated in Britain, within the UK, a lot sooner than others. Would you say that's a contributing factor, or is that something which you guys considered when looking at the data?
Well, I mean, I think in terms of considering at the level of including region in as an explanatory variable, it definitely factors in in that respect. But it also factors in, if we look in the paper, the kind of different almost demographic makeup, where people, where like different groups are in proportion throughout the country. And we see certain changes in that. And that might possibly be explaining some of the stuff we see for the Black African group, how they're the only group where the situation's worsening over time. We think that might be actually a kind of a compositional effect that we're, obviously, there's a different kind of group of people moving in from that area. But there's like, part of the idea of the paper is taking into account that these things are fluid over time as well.
I mean, more broadly, Steve, you've done a great job in mapping some new empirical regularities, both across ethnicity and across the wage distribution. But the question why behind this heterogeneity, I suspect, will come up in the next couple of papers as well. I mean, there's not a lot of theory to go with, is there here? I mean, interpretation of these results, in respect to the why question, is pretty tough, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, I think it is. I mean, like, obviously, we try to consider what's driving things. Like in the paper, we do a bit more on detailed effects. And a lot, a lot of it is education is driving a lot of, a lot of it. And as you, another thing, kind of notable thing is, and that's true for pretty much every group, and pretty much consistently across the time periods, apart from Black Caribbean, where there's no real significant effect across the distribution.
Yeah, I thought education was probably one of the key factors. And hence why I asked that question, that if you're ultimately, if you're part of an organisation or a company for a lot longer than another individual coming in six years later, doing used to policy, you're used to the national wage, your understanding of kind of the pay and that way you kind of stand is a lot more clearer. Whereas if you're just coming into the UK, you might do the same level of work for a lot cheaper and not question it for a smart year. So yeah, I can see why you guys are quite like that.
Yeah, but we also like to look at job tenure as well, which doesn't have a strong effect, but like, in a similar kind of way.
One last very quick question we have in the Q and A from Shuai Shen is, what about, can you actually study East Asians as a group if the Chinese sample is limited? Did you ever do that and is that possible?
Yeah, I mean, it is possible and it is worth doing, but we didn't do it in that way. Just it's almost kind of getting more one that they're not that narrow groups, but it's getting as narrow as we, as the data could allow. And it would have been, we've been wrong to include our results for the Chinese because it was just, I don't want to tell a story that's not there.
Fair enough. Steve, thank you very much indeed. That's that. Over to Carl Singleton next, who's going to talk about, again, the distribution of ethnic pay gaps, but this time bringing in the role of the firm.
Okay, thank you. I presume you can see that, Alex? You shout at me if you can't.
Yeah, we can see it. Thanks, Carl.
Right, thanks. So I should warn people who are watching this online that I'm actually in the room here. So I might be hand waving because I might descend into lecture, am I right, I'm afraid? Okay, so first thing you'll notice about this paper is there's a lot of co-authors. You might be thinking that's too many co-authors, or something that's going to be explained in 20 minutes or so. But the reason why there are so many co-authors is because this is part, a small output from a very big project that I've been working on with Alex and John, who are both here, and others, where we've been trying to add a lot of value to existing social sciences research data sets for the UK by forming new administrative linkages between those data sets, supported by the Administrative Data Research UK, the ESRC, and a lot of partners, Office for National Statistics and other government bodies. And today's talk, as well as answering an important question, I'm hoping gives you some flavour of the value added that we're doing, we're providing through those new data linkages. It's going to be a very, very similar paper to Steve's in a sense. We're going to look at the distribution of ethnicity wage gaps. And we're going to demonstrate one of those linkages when you take the employer-employee linked annual survey of hours and earnings, payroll-based data as opposed to household-based data. And we've linked that to the census to bring in a lot more information about these employees' demographic characteristics to look into this, to look into these ethnicity wage gaps through the distribution. So Steve's already done the motivation to some extent, but I'm going to motivate it a slightly different way from the perspective of bringing firms into the study. So I would perhaps argue that if you, that the firm, to some extent, in a wage model, trying to understand wage gaps or wage inequality. And a lot of studies that are based just on household survey data, they're an emitted factor, they're an emitted variable. Who you work for can matter, firm-specific wage determination. Usually, studies might have a few controls, covarites, firm size, maybe the sector the firm's in. But the actual identity of the firm and seeing multiple workers working for the same firm is an emitted factor in this literature. And one exception to that, as well as this paper that I'm going to present, is coming in the next talk in this session from John. And as I'm sure many people here know, there's an increasing recognition, though, that firms are paysetters. They have wage-setting power and increasingly wage-setting power. And a lot of the studies of dynamics of wage inequality, at the aggregate and also between different groups, have shown that increasingly those dynamics are being driven by between firm inequality as opposed to rises in residual wage inequality within firms. I'm sure, again, we'll all know as well, that there's a lot of evidence that the firm matters from correspondence studies, particularly from the UK, a vast, a vast amount of evidence there. And if that, that evidence is coming back that discrimination probably matters at the hiring margin, that implies that firms are having some specific role in determining, potentially determining wage gaps because that relates to firm entry, access to particular jobs in firms. And there's also some evidence I've contributed to that for the gender wage gap in the UK, the identity of the firm that you work for, I, do you work for a higher or a low wage firm, one that pays all its workers a high wage as opposed to a low wage, matters more for the gender wage gap on average than occupations do in the UK. Others have shown that for other countries as well recently. So our contributions are threefold, we think, we hope. So first of all, is the generic, general contribution of what we're doing with these data linkages that we're augmenting the largest employer-employee panel dataset in the UK already, the annual survey of hours and earnings. And we're adding in a lot more information about those employees because the ASH itself contains very little information about who these workers are. The ASH provides very accurate payroll data straight from employers' payrolls and all the different components. The ASH provides very accurate payroll data straight from employers' payrolls and all the different components of work and hours worked, not self-reported. It contains detailed occupational classifications provided by the firm, not the worker. And tenure and obviously the identity of the firms can be linked to all the business survey datasets as well, which we're also doing. And then we're adding in the census, we're getting ethnicity from there, because that only gender and age are in the ASH. And then we're getting in loads of other important covariates for wages that would be in the labour force survey, but would not have been in this payroll dataset before. So we're getting education for the first time in a payroll dataset. We're getting family circumstances, are you married? Is your partner working? How many children have you got? Age of the dependent children. So, and then our second contribution, then taking this new dataset, is we're going to do much the same as what Steve has done. But we're only going to do it for that one year in twenty eleven, and we're going to examine ethnicity wage gaps across the distribution of these basic hourly payroll wages. I'm going to look by different ethnic groups and then compare to white workers, and then we're going to add in these firm-specific wage determinants. How much does it matter perhaps what firms, workers are getting into or working out? And hopefully, we think this provides some novel insights into the firm's role in ethnicity wage gaps in England and Wales throughout the wage distribution. Kind of gives some indication about how biased wage gap decomposition estimates could be without accounting for who the firm is, if you don't have that information. And it also demonstrates what we can do with this new linked payroll census dataset. So a little bit more detail about this data. So this is the annual survey of hours and earnings, so this said linked to twenty eleven census. It doesn't have a name yet, we're probably going to call it ASH census, we're probably not going to be that imaginative about it. It's a one percent sample of employee jobs from the ASH, data provided by the employer, and you get around point six percent of employee jobs varying over the period. It can go back all the way to the seventies. So even though we've done this linkage in two thousand and eleven, we can map this forward ten years and we can map it back thirty years potentially with a lot of attrition. The ASH itself, though, does track the same people over time. It's based on national insurance number. If you've got a national insurance number ending in X, I won't say what it is, you should be in this dataset in theory, when you've got an employee job over time. O N S, Office for National Statistics, linked this data using the census, using names, information in the census that you also have based on P I Y E records and about the firms. And the match rate was a bit less than you might expect because of names, actually. Names are not as consistent to record as you might imagine, and even names on the ASH were quite often missing. But the match, the match rate we got was around only, well, it was sixty percent of employees in twenty eleven. And then we found that out, we used information from twenty ten, twenty twelve to improve the matching, and we're still working on that to some extent. But the dataset is going to be released very soon in its present format for everybody to play with and work with. And so there could be some potential non-random linkage between these two datasets, because the ASH in theory is random, the linkage might not be that we have addressed. We will be generating some weights that are available to researchers to address that. And we've checked and compared earnings statistics and distributions from this new dataset, what you've provided in the labour force survey and the annual population survey, and they are remarkably, well, I'm not, I'm not going to be able to answer you today, but they're remarkably consistent, particularly the shape of these wage distributions that you get from household survey datasets compared to the payroll data. So we're only going to today, we're not going to, we're going to ignore the panel in the ASH, we're not going to get that complicated, I'm afraid, because of the attrition problem. And we not, haven't looked at whether there's non-random attrition over time in this ASH census linkage. We're going to focus on twenty eleven, we're going to focus on England and Wales, because that's where we've been able so far to do this ASH census linkage. We're going to bring with it in as well, compared to Steve's paper, to boost our sample. We're going to look at full and part-time workers, and then we do have a slightly bigger sample here, so we're going to add Chinese ethnic minority group relative to what Steve was doing with the labour force survey. So, and then just to say the units of what I mean by a firm, because I should always be very specific here, because people mean very different things by firm across all this different literature about firm-specific determinants of wages. Firms for us are the administrative enterprise. That's the enterprise as we're recording on the interdepartmental business register. Typically, you can think of that as it being Tesco or Tesco supermarkets as opposed to Tesco banking. Maybe that's a different enterprise, but Tesco supermarkets, but meaning you're getting variation over plants and local units as well. So you're picking up multi-site firms, which means you can still identify the influence of location as well as the influence of the firm specifically. Typically, the literature, which is used, I tend to think about the enterprise as approximately the level where you'd expect pay, pay, pay policies to be set and specific pay, pay determination policies, et cetera. Okay, so the sample design, you're probably thinking, well, how are you going to bring firms into this? Well, we're not going to do it too sophisticated in a way, because we don't actually have that many employees within some firms. Yes, we're going to have a lot of employees within some firms, and I shouldn't say the names of those firms, we all know probably who they are. And but then as we get smaller and smaller firms, really, we're going to be really running out of people within firms to compare against each other, to compare their wages. But we do have firms, we have workers linked within those firms for a cross-section of twenty eleven labour market. We're not going to do within and between firm-specific components of wage gaps, like Carter, Taladon for gender pay, gender wage gate gaps in more, in larger samples of administrative data. Instead, we're only going to estimate an average residual firm-specific wage, and the best way to think of that is it's going to be a firm wage effect in the models, which is just fixed over all the employees within that firm. And as I've just said, the sample becomes a little bit biased towards larger firms, because, well, you need to see two workers in the firm, otherwise you can't identify or you can't label something a firm-specific wage effect. At least two workers in the firm, should I say. Our preferred measure of wages is the basic hourly wage, that is, taking everything else out, what's your basic rate of pay or what's your hourly rate of pay or what's your basic salary level, taking out supplementary pay over time. I think I prefer that measure as a way of looking at inequality, or particularly the place where you might expect to be able to more easily interpret when you see differences in that rate of pay within the firm as something to do with discrimination, as opposed to perhaps to people having different working patterns over time, supplementary pay because of working on bank holidays, et cetera. And other paid, other paid components. We also do look at the paper when it's written, it's coming soon, gross earnings per hour is a robustness check as well. So then we've got from the ASH, we've got gender, age, where people live, only that's one region, we're going to have tenure, part-time status, and we're going to throw in the occupation as well. Because we don't want, you know, occupations go clearly correlated with firms, so we don't want it to be driven by occupation. We want to see whether it's residually firms as opposed to occupations, and maybe explaining some of these gaps. And then from the census, we're bringing in ethnicity, measure of education, marital status, the number of children in the household, actually, I'm sorry, I should be specific, a family, the age of the youngest child, and whether the individual was non-U K born. Okay, right, so we're going to go to distributions, but we should start with the mean. So I've highlighted in the centre here some mean wage statistics for white employees from our new ASH census dataset. The first two columns are of the ASH census, the final column is a comparator with the annual population survey for the same period. So the first thing actually to point out perhaps is the ends that we're getting, right? The sample sizes that we're getting for this ASH census dataset, comparing it to the annual population survey, which if you know is a combined, combination of four, four different waves of labour force survey respondents boosted as well in some areas of the country. So we're getting, for example, Chinese in our dataset, the Chinese ethnic minority group, we're getting three hundred and seventy nine. Whereas in the annual population survey for the same period, we're getting less than half of that, in terms of employees specifically. So we are getting a bigger sample size from this by for some ethnic minority groups, just for the twenty eleven period for England and Wales. Looking at these average wages, what we were particularly happy to find was the two ASH columns, the ordering of the wages and the wage gaps is similar or exactly the same across ethnic groups as we'd find in the annual population survey. We've been a bit concerned if we found something completely different, because then that would go back to concerns about a non-random linkage of these two datasets. And in fact, the kind of magnitudes are relatively similar as well, reasonably. Now, I'm going to mess with everybody's heads a little bit, because I'm going to flip around the gaps, I'm afraid, for the rest of the talk, relative to what the last presentation showed. So a positive gap is going to be ethnic minority minus white workers, a statistic related to the ethnic minority group and the white group. And the negative is going to be the other way around for effectively a penalty. Okay, so there's a mean, but we've got, we'll have a lot of stuff in the paper about looking at the mean, we'll do everything that we do for the different quantiles at the mean as well. But for the rest of this talk, I'm going to go into the distribution.
You've had fifteen minutes, Carl, okay?
All right, okay, right. So here's some stacked percentages. It shows something similar to what Steve showed earlier about the relative distribution of people throughout the wage distribution, so I'm going to skip over that. We're going to be on the mean, we're decomposing differences in an ethnic minority wage distribution relative to a white wage distribution. This is just a graphical illustration of that. And what we're doing is we're taking gaps at different quantiles. And again, I'm going to lean heavily on what Steve's already explained, because we're using very similar methodology. I'll flip through this, other than to say that the main difference in our wage regressions, if you reach quantile, these rif regressions, is that we're incorporating the phi term in the, in the regression, in, in particular, we're introducing a wage effect from the fact that two workers work in the same firm. And then we can call that a firm-specific wage effect in the model. We then do the same kind of counterfactual exercise as you saw before, and we're going to project a counterfactual for the, for the mate, for the firm fixed effect component. So we have first line, here is the quantile difference between quantiles, and we've got the coefficients effect again from the differential labour market returns that people get for particular characteristics. Then we've got the characteristics effect, the normal people, different ethnic minority groups have different distributions over age and tenure and occupations. A firm fixed effects component, we're going to get from projecting and estimating firm-specific wage effects for white workers in a particular firm, and then projecting those onto the ethnic minority employees, the distribute, projecting those onto ethnic minority employees. So it's going to give us a sense of the extent to which the wage gaps are determined by the different distribution of workers over these firm-specific wage effects that white workers can own if they're in those firms. Okay, so our, our distribution of the wage gaps, we do this particular quantiles, it's a setup, we're going to mess with your heads a bit, I flipped it around relative to Steve. So we've got the big Chinese relative wage premium across the wage distribution. In the positive, we also have for Indian workers, a relative wage premium for high quantiles. For Pakistani, Bangladeshi and Black African employees, relative disadvantage, which is growing for the reasons that Steve mentioned, probably because of the minimum wage's influence. But it's growing across, partly because of the minimum wage influence, but it's growing across the percentiles. And then the Black Caribbean group has a relative wage premium at particular percentiles to white workers up to the, up to the median, and then a relative wage disadvantage. Comparing respective percentiles of the wage distributions. So for the Indian white wage gap, starting there, this was a group that towards the top of the wage distribution, the ninetieth percentile of Indian men is earning more than the ninety, oh, sorry, not just men, ninety percentile of Indian employees is earning more than the ninetieth percentile of white employees. That's given by this solid black line. Then we've got the specific contribution of the firm. Now, what you can see with this blue solid line, which tracks the contribution of those firm fixed effects, that the reason why those wages are higher towards the top of the wage distribution amongst Indian employees, the vast majority of that is accounted for this previously omitted variable, which is who you work for. You know, Indians are accessing towards the top of the distribution where they earn high wages relative to the ninety percentile of men. It's because they're getting access to firms which pay higher wages to all their workers in general. And that, that means though, that what would previously have been attributed to characteristics effects, the influence of education, et cetera, was being overestimated. Overestimated because it correlates with access to those particular firms, staying in those jobs in those firms. So what you see on the right-hand side here of this graph is the contributions to the black line. The solid line is the contribution from characteristics effects, once we've controlled the firm fixed effects. And then the dash line was what we would have got if we hadn't controlled the firm fixed effects. And you can see that that's massively, well, relatively over, overestimated, because you've not accounted for these correlations between getting into high-wage firms and having characteristics which allow you access to keeping, staying, getting into those jobs or staying in those jobs. The Chinese white wage gap has much the same pattern, where a large amount, reason for that, a large part of the reason for those relative wage premiums through the distribution is again towards, to do with accessing high-wage firms. And again, on the right-hand panel, you're seeing a difference between that dash line, dash red line, the solid red line, again showing an overestimation that you would find without accounting to the firm, an overestimation of how much was being driven by education, for example, or occupations. We've got more detailed compositions of that difference in the paper, but for now, we don't really have time to go into it. Pakistani, Bangladeshi, I'm skipping very fast, and Black Africans groups, generally, the role of firms is relatively small. This blue line is not accounting for much of those relative wage gaps through the distribution. Bangladeshia is moderating the wage gaps towards the top. And the Black Caribbean is relatively interesting in terms of that there's absolutely no effect of the firm wage effects towards the top of the distribution. And even after accounting for the firms, there's no contribution towards the top, similar to what Steve showed from the characteristics effect. There are, the wage gaps towards the top of the Black Caribbean white wage gap distributions are accounted for by the different labour market structure. The returns to, the returns, the wage returns to particular characteristics in the labour market. Okay, so summing up very quickly with a lot of text on the slide, yeah, I'm used to my students not turning it to my lectures, so I have to put everything on the slides, sorry, bad habit. So ethnicity wage gaps vary greatly by groups and across the wage distribution, as we saw from Steve's presentation. We're confirming that as well with a new dataset from the UK. Firm-specific wage effects, we think, really contribute, they tend to contribute in very different ways across ethnic groups and across the wage distribution. And firm-specific wage effects for some groups and in some parts of the wage distribution tend to account for sizable parts of the gaps that you would otherwise have attributed to observable characteristics such as education, such as regions, such as occupation, which were actually really probably accounted for more by accessing top, top wage, high wage firms, high, although relatively high wage firms. Okay, so next steps for this project, related to, or this part of the project, is we're decomposing further these contributions of the firm-specific wage effects. We, I've already done it, but I can't show the results yet, but in general, these other aspects, is it private, is it public, is it big, small firms? That doesn't seem to matter very much, to be honest, it doesn't account for these firm patterns. And then we're going to look at the role played by religion, because we have that from the census, we have local labour markets, we know where people work and where they, where they live. Great data in that regard. We can look at rent sharing, because we have phone financial data that we can link in. Self-employment, but we're going to get access to H M R C data soon, so we can bring that into the picture. And then we're also working towards extending to this linkage to twenty twenty one census as well. So I'll finish there, because I know I went over time, I was trying to get a lot.
Not really, Carl.
Showcase our project.
Pretty much perfect, thanks. I can't see any questions in the actual Q and As, but I've got two to start us off. First of all, well, when can people get your data? And then the second one is to what extent can we infer anything about assortative matching between high-wage firms and high-wage workers from the movement in the coefficients effect within, without the firm fixed effects? I suspect the answer is nothing, but you've sort of invoked that in the narrative a little bit.
Yeah, so I'll answer the first question first. So access to the data, I believe you can already order it on the catalogue with the O N S Secure Research Service, there'll be access through there. However, even though you can order it, it doesn't exist yet, actually. So I believe it's going to be available by, by about July, June, July, early summer, I think it's the current schedule. On the second question, I'm hoping there aren't any macro labour economists here, because I always try to verge very well away from these issues of sorting and positive assorted matching. Because the extent to which you're able to identify those things from wage, wage data gets very murky. Yeah, that's a very tough question, Alex, and we'll have to think about that.
Believe it.
Because we've not really, we've not really got any mobility in the model, have we? Or in the, in these data, because we're not even using any of the panels of the ASH, which we could use.
I mean, I guess the broader question, we should open it up to see whether any of the other speakers have anything to say, is the extent to which we know anything at all about ethnic sorting into different sorts of firms. I mean, we know about the correspondence studies regarding hiring discrimination, but it's not clear to me that that tells us about, for example, heterogeneity with respect to the propensity of different firms to discriminate, for example. And, and it's not clear to me what preferences people from different ethnic groups might have regarding firm traits. I mean, what we do know from, from, from the literature is that there is a preference for more tolerant employers to avoid discrimination, taste-based discrimination, and that plays out in some studies, and we see that in sexual orientation studies as well. But that's a big question for this sort of project, isn't it?
Might come on to that when I speak in a meme.
Might come on to that when I speak in a meme in a moment, but I think basically what we've got here is a big, large firm bias for the for the ethnic minorities, right? I'll maybe say a bit more about that when I talk, but I think just by the nature of how employment is structured, I think we have a higher share of employment for ethnic minorities in large firms. And I think large firms tend in general to be more tolerant and more organised on equality issues. So I think that probably works on the in terms of where ethnic minority workers might seek to end up being employed. And I think, you know, we know about the the large firm wage literature, so I think that could be part of it that's worth teasing out. But I mean, my Carl, in your presentation, the 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 firm fixed effect is almost always above the line, right? It's almost always working positively for the ethnic minorities.
There's no.
Not in that case, okay, that's the the exception, but in the other, I think it's usually above the line.
Yeah.
And then the the coefficients effect is usually below the line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a question in the room.
Yeah, so given what was said about sorting into firms. Like, how should I interpret your results, given that like, if we think about, you know, part of part of the wage gap is that, you know, people selected to different firms, right? So so I'm a bit unclear about like, why we should interpret it with the fix effects instead of without. Since we might think that, well, if you were just want a picture of, you know, whether ethnic minorities are worse off, it makes more sense to consider it without the firm fix effects. Because that would also consider the sorting into the firms. And it might be the case that, you know, they face a lot of discrimination and therefore they can only sort to like low performing firms and that's part of the disadvantage.
Sure, we can't without the focus, which we don't know whether it is with as opposed to between versus within firm aspect, right? So when she got the firm in there and the firm doesn't count for anything, then we know it's all within firm, right? Though it's not because people work for different firms.
But you can sort of like decompose it like this, like.
You could if we use the panel.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's the other point I was going to ask is that in comparison to the, it's just like similar to like this about Kramas, like all this literature. And the difference here is that that literature is the identification of the fixed effects comes from movement, but here you have no movement.
No.
So how should we think about identification in this framework?
So I would not. I would I would put this in the in the in the guise of a much more descriptive exercise. And why I was very, I tried to call it the firm average residual wage that's fixed across employees within the firm. I wouldn't think of it as the like the Bao Kramas, I can never pronounce it, AKM model, where it's identified from firm switching. Yeah, I would never.
In the in the in the spirit of descriptors, and we should come on to John in a minute, there are two questions in in the chat, as I call it. The one is two other observables, is there anything Tania Wilson asked about knowing whether ethnic minority groups are more likely to sort into larger firms? And secondly, there's a question about can we say anything about the role of unionisation in these data? And we know we can do a little bit, don't we, Carl, because of the ASH collective bargaining type variable?
Yeah, so I alluded to it at the end, we can partial out those effects, big firms, small firms, private sector, unionised firms, etc. We can partial that out from the firm component. And we're going to do that by the time we come to putting this paper out.
And we haven't looked, have we, at whether or not there's a differential propensity for ethnic minority workers to work in larger firms?
Uh, no.
Okay, so that's that could be something we could look at. Okay, thanks very much indeed, Carl, I think we should move on finally then to John Forth, who's also going to be talking about the role of the employer, but this time more the workplace, the role of the workplace in the ethnic wage gap.
Thanks very much, Alex, you can hear me okay and see the slides.
Perfect, John, yeah.
Great, thank you. So this is a paper with Nikos Theodoropoulos at the University of Cyprus and Alex, who of course is on the line. Yeah, again, looking at the role of the workplace in ethnic wage differentials, but you see there's quite a different slant to the one that Carl has presented just previously. So why is that not moving? Oh, here we go, okay. So as Carl has indicated, whilst household surveys can tell us an awful lot about the ethnic wage gap, they have relatively little to say about the role of the firm or the workplace, they can tell us about industry wage differences, region and so on. But they have less to say about these two important channels. So one might be this between workplace segregation. So maybe if ethnic minorities and whites are segregated into different sorts of workplaces, that could contribute to the wage gap. And it could work to the advantage or the disadvantage of ethnic minorities. If we look at the literature on the gender wage gap, we tend to find there that segregation widens the wage gap. So women are disproportionately allocated into lower wage firms. So that makes the the wage gap even bigger than it is just within firm. But then there can also, of course, be these within workplace wage setting processes, which can also contribute to the ethnic wage gap as Carl was just alluding to. And there's good survey evidence that there are issues about wage setting within workplaces. So a couple of instances here, Wheatley and Gifford is a CIPD survey, Heath and Chung also have some evidence which show that ethnic minorities are more likely than white employees to feel that they've been treated unfairly by their employer or their manager. And of course, we know that there are numerous cases where ethnic minority employees take successful complaints to the employment tribunal. So there obviously are issues in terms of the wage setting process as well. And it's interesting, I think, to try and get a better understanding of the importance of these different elements, what you might call segregation, or what you might call wage setting. Because they, I think they seem to have different policy responses. If we find that the segregation of ethnic minorities and whites into different types of workplaces is a major part of the ethnic wage gap. And that would suggest that we need to put increased efforts into combating hiring discrimination or different employees' choices of who to work for. Whereas if we find that most of the wage gap actually is within the workplace, so the disproportionate segregation doesn't really factor into the wage gap at all, it's mostly within, then that suggests we want to put more effort into addressing differences in wage setting between ethnic minorities and whites. So the kind of questions that we tried to address then in this paper, are ethnic minorities disproportionately represented in high or low wage workplaces? Carl has already presented a little bit of evidence on that already. Is there still an ethnic wage gap once we account for these this disproportionate or differential segregation? So we'll take the same kind of approach to Carl's paper, we'll identify workplace specific wage effects, we'll try and take those out of the ethnic wage gap to see whether a gap still exists, what you might call within the workplace. Is there evidence then consistent with employer discrimination against ethnic minorities in wage setting? So can we, if we see a wage gap that is existing within the workplace between observationally equivalent coworkers? Do we have any other circumstantial evidence to suggest that might actually come from discrimination or unequal treatment? And then the final question we'll try to look at is, can we find a different sorts of pay setting arrangements where the within workplace wage gap is actually smaller or larger? So is this ethnic wage gap within workplace smaller when pay setting is more systematic? And that will help us identify potential policy remedies. So that's where we're going to go across these four questions, just to give you a preview of what we're going to cover. We're going to look at these issues with linked employer employee data for Britain. Our data is the Workplace Employment Relations Survey. What will show is there's considerable segregation of employees across workplaces in Britain. But ethnic wage penalties are primarily a within workplace phenomenon, so this segregation doesn't really contribute a whole lot. That's actually consistent with a number of other studies done in other countries. So a couple of studies here for the US, one for Canada and one for Brazil, which also find that most of the ethnic wage gap exists within workplace rather than between workplaces. Will show some evidence that's consistent with unequal treatment in the workplace by ethnicity. So we'll see that ethnic minorities are less satisfied than their pay with their white than their white coworkers and also more likely to feel over skilled in their role than whites. And I'll go on to identify two workplace practices that are associated with smaller ethnic wage penalties. So firstly, the recognition of trade unions, often talked about as a sword of justice in pay setting in the workplace. And also the use of formal job evaluation schemes. So those are schemes which seek to evaluate the comparable worth of different roles within a firm and set pay according to the role's value. So in a sense, trying to take the individual out of pay setting. So that's where we're headed over the next little while. And where we'll get to is to the kind of policy conclusion that we should be looking to place more emphasis on ensuring fairness in wage determination. So the data is linked employer employee data from the British Workplace Employment Relations Survey. We're going to use three waves of that survey. It's cross sectional, so we have three cross sections that we're going to pull. Those cross sections come from 1998, 2004 and 2011. There's been no more recent iteration of this survey, so we stop at 2011. What you get in each wave of that survey is a survey of around 2,000 workplaces each time. So we've got around 6,000 workplaces in total. The size threshold for entry into the survey does vary, so it was workplaces with 10 or more employees in 1998, but five or more employees in 2004 and 2011. We essentially ignore that and just pull these three cross sections, even though there's a slightly different sized threshold. In that survey, there's an interview with an HR manager in each of the participating workplaces. And the HR manager gives information on the composition of the workplace, of the workforce. So that includes the share of ethnic minority employees. So we can use that to look at how the share of ethnic minority employees differs across different types of workplace. They also give information on workplace demographics, the size, ownership, industry, region. And also tell us a bit about the HR practices, so how a wage is set in that workplace. And then we have a linked survey of up to 25 randomly selected employees at each workplace. On average, somewhere between 10 and 15 of those employees tend to respond. And for those employees, we know their ethnicity, so they report on their ethnic group and they use a standard census type question. There are seven groups, as Steve and Carl have already alluded to. Our sample sizes are quite a bit smaller than theirs. So in what I'm going to show you, I'll focus on white versus non white, but we are going to split by gender, men and women. I have got some, a sort of bonus slide where I show some of the results split by ethnicity and we can look at that if we have time at the end. The employee tells us about their gross wage, they don't give continuous data on their wage, they respond in 14 bands. So they essentially tick a box depending on their gross wage, but they do give us continuous data on their working hours. So we construct a gross hourly wage interval with those data and then choose the midpoint of that interval, which has been done in a number of other papers. For the employee, then we have job and personal characteristics, so occupation, tenure, education and so on. We're only looking here at full time employees. We made that choice because we're aware there's some quite differential selection, particularly for part time women from some ethnic minority groups, so we're only looking at full timers. So what we have basically is cross sectional data from around 50,000 employees in around 6,000 workplaces, once we pull these three years together. Okay, so what I'm going to show you here is some information on the distribution of ethnic minorities across workplaces. Okay, so I want to focus only on the dark blue bar, don't worry about the other two, we'll come on to those in a moment. But just looking at the dark blue bar on the Y axis here, what I'm showing you is workplaces and the share of non white employees in the workplace. So at the top of the graph, we have the share of all workplaces where there are no ethnic minorities. And you can see that's around about 63% of all workplaces have no ethnic minority employees. Then about 25% have an ethnic minority share between 1 and 9%. And those shares get smaller as we go to higher shares of ethnic minorities. Obviously, there are very, very few workplaces where ethnic minorities are the majority of employees in the site. Most workplaces are all white. But what the other bar shows the distribution of employment. So although most workplaces are all white, most workplaces are also very small. So actually, when you look at the distribution of ethnicity, because many workplace, many employees are in large workplaces, we do have quite a lot of employment where a white employee has an ethnic minority coworker and vice versa. So when we look and try and understand the distribution of the blue bars, so what predisposes a workplace to have a higher share of ethnic minorities? It's partly a function of size, so roughly one in 10 employees in the British labour market are an ethnic minority worker. So if you've got a small workplace, the chance of you recruiting at least one ethnic minority is relatively small. Geographical distribution also plays a key part because many ethnic minority employees are focused in urban areas. Once you take account of those two things, there are other factors that are associated with the incidence of ethnic minorities within the workplace. So workplaces are more likely to have ethnic minority workers if there's a young workforce, if they have a high percentage of sales staff, and if they're in certain sectors such as hospitality and health. So what we can see then is there are a number of different ways in which the distribution of ethnic minorities across workplaces is not random. And if that's associated with these workplace specific wage effects, then it could contribute to the ethnic wage gap. Okay. So what we're going to do is examine the correlation between the share of ethnic minority workers in the workplace and the workplace specific wage premium. So to do that, we're going to first identify the workplace specific wage premium. Excuse me, there's some noise behind me, I'm just trying to get rid of that. We're going to regress employees' gross hourly wages on a set of employee characteristics, so gender, age, qualifications, occupation. We're going to compute the mean residual wage for each workplace. So the average residual across all of the employees who we observe in that workplace, we're going to call that the workplace specific wage premium. So the workplace component of wages that is contributing to the wage of everybody in that workplace. And I'm going to simply correlate with that with the share of ethnic minorities in the workplace. So we've got this workplace specific residual on the left and we've got the share of non white employees on the right. And what we see there in the table at the bottom is there's a positive correlation. So workplaces with higher shares of non white employees tend to pay higher wages on average, okay? So ethnic minorities are essentially more likely to be found in higher wage workplaces than lower wage workplaces. We have two takes on that, so column one is just a continuous measure of the share non white at the workplace. In column two, we split that into groups, but essentially the same message from both of those regressions. And that's broadly consistent with what Carl showed when we saw that most of his firm fixed effects were above the line rather than below it, okay? So that's a different story to the gender wage gap. As I said, in the gender wage gap, mostly we find that women are generally sorted into lower wage workplaces. On average, ethnic minorities in Britain are generally sorted into higher wage workplaces. So then we want to look at the ethnic wage gap within the workplace. So here we're going to the employee level, so we've got employee wages, each employee is I in workplace J. And we're regressing their wage on an ethnic minority dummy, so a non white dummy, that's epsilon. A set of employee characteristics, so education, age, tenure, occupation. And then a set of workplace characteristics, so the size of the workplace, industry, region, ownership characteristics and so on. And that's what we see in the in the first and second column here. So in the first column, we've got unconditional, so raw wage gaps between white and non white workers. Top panel is men, bottom panel is women. If we focus on male employees firstly, you'll see that the raw wage gap is about 10 percentage points. So non white employees earn about 10% less than white workers on average for men. If we control for these employee characteristics and these observable workplace characteristics, that goes to minus 0.13, so around about 13%. What we then do in column three is replace the W, the vector of observed workplace characteristics, with a workplace fixed effect. Okay, so then we're also accounting for any un. with a workplace fixed effect. Okay, so then we're also accounting for any unobserved differences between workplaces. And then we get a coefficient of around about minus eleven percent, which we can interpret as the difference between white and non white employees once the average wage differences between workplaces have been taken out of the equation. So essentially, a within workplace ethnic wage gap. And what we see then for men is that the distribution of male and white and non white employees doesn't really contribute to the ethnic wage gap. Most of the ethnic wage gap is within the workplace. If we then turn to women, you'll see there's no wage gap in the raw data. That's reasonably consistent with what we see in household data. A wage gap, though, does then emerge once we start to condition on factors. And in particular, in column three, we see a within workplace wage gap of around about seven percent. It's not as big as the wage gap for men, but it certainly is there and is statistically significant.
You've had fifteen minutes, okay?
Thank you. Yeah. So if we observe then that there looks to be an ethnic wage gap that's not about the distribution of employees across different workplaces, but seems to be between observationally equivalent coworkers, to what extent might that be explained by the unequal treatment of whites and non whites in the workplace? Well, one alternative explanation to unequal treatment might be that it's a somehow a compensating wage differential. Maybe there are other elements of the reward package where ethnic minorities do better than white workers. Indeed, there's some evidence of that from the literature. Bond and Lehman have a paper in Labour Economics where they suggest that some ethnic minorities might trade off lower wages for more employment security. So what we do is we have data in our survey on employee satisfaction with their pay and a number of other measures of job quality. So extent to which they have training, job security, autonomy, and so on. And what we do here, though, is we're regressing the employee satisfaction with their pay on the pay that they receive and then other indicators of their job quality. And we do that with and without workplace fixed effects. So looking at columns one and two, what we're trying to say here is if we control for the wage and we also control for other elements of job quality, so how much training the employee says they get, how much autonomy they say they have in the job, how much job security they say they have, how intensely they say they have to work, if we try and control for all of those things. If the lower wages of ethnic minorities were simply being like a compensating wage differential for better treatment on these other things, we would expect to see that whites and non whites would have the same level of satisfaction with their wage. But in fact, we see that non white employees are less satisfied with their wages after taking these other facets of the reward package into account. In columns three and four, we do that in a different way. So instead of trying to include indicators of the amount of training they get or the amount of autonomy, we use the employees' responses to how satisfied they are with those non pay dimensions. So their satisfaction with the level of autonomy they've got, the satisfaction with training, satisfaction with job security. And you'll see, we see broadly the same result. Whichever way we control for the rest of the reward package, non white employees are less satisfied with their pay than white employees. And that would be consistent with unequal treatment in wage setting. We have another way of looking at that. We also look at the extent to which employees think they might be over skilled for their job. So if you imagine that maybe an ethnic minority employee is being paid less than they than an equivalent white worker, they might be more likely then to report that they have more skills than they're being being used in their job. In a sense, over skilled for the role, given all the other aspects of the role, including its pay. So we take that perception, they're asked, employees in this survey, to what extent do you think your skills are either higher or the same or lower than what are needed for your job? And we look at the extent to which employees report that they are over skilled. So my skills are much higher or a bit higher than needed for my current job. We're controlling then here for other elements of the job, like occupation, we're controlling for education, we're controlling for age, we're controlling for workplace characteristics. And after controlling for those various things, non white employees are more likely to report that they think they are over skilled, that their skills are much higher than needed for the job than our white employees who are observationally equivalent. And again, that result stays when we replace the workplace observables with the workplace fixed effects. So in a sense, within the workplace, non white employees are less likely than their, more likely, sorry, than their white coworkers to report that they are over skilled for their job. So we've got a within workplace ethnic wage gap. We've got evidence that employees are less satisfied with their pay if they're an ethnic minority. And they seem to be more likely to report that they're over skilled for their job. So circumstantial evidence that these pay gaps might at least in part be about unequal treatment. So then the final thing we do is to try and look to see if we can find some workplace practices that might be associated with smaller ethnic wage gap, ethnic wage gaps. In particular, if there's some sort of idiosyncratic component to the wage setting process, we might expect these ethnic wage gaps to be smaller when workplaces have methods of pay setting that are, if you like, more systematic. And we look, or at least present, three different pay setting features, if you like, that can exist within workplaces. So firstly, we look at workplaces that recognize unions for pay bargaining and we compare the ethnic wage gaps in those workplaces with the ethnic wage gaps in workplaces where unions aren't recognized. Secondly, we have some data in the survey where the employer is asked about their equal opportunities practices. So do they have an equal opportunities policy and so on? And then we focus in particular on one of the practices they're asked out about. And they're asked whether the, as an employer, they routinely review relative pay rates by ethnicity. So do they relatively monitor the pay rates given to white and ethnic minority employees? So we can compare workplaces that do that with workplaces that don't.
And then you've had twenty minutes, by the way, just so that you know.
Yep, just coming into land. And then finally, we look at workplaces with a formal job evaluation scheme. Is the ethnic wage gap smaller in those sorts of workplaces? We, so what we're doing here is we're taking a workplace practice, we're entering that into the employee level wage equation and we're interacting it with the non white dummy. So I'm going to go through this table relatively quickly. What we've got, just to show you in the first two columns, is in column one, we've got an O L S equation. So it's a wage, an employee wage equation, controlling for employee observables and workplace observables. And you'll see, we've got a dummy for non white employees, we've got a dummy for workplaces that recognize unions, and then we've got an interaction between the two. So the non white dummy here, the coefficient of minus one point one four two is showing us that non white employees earn around fourteen percent less than white employees in workplaces where unions aren't recognized. And then the interaction term, the point zero six nine, is showing us that that wage penalty is reduced by about seven percentage points in workplaces which recognize unions. And you can see that broad pattern of result stays when we replace the workplace observables with workplace fixed effects. Columns three and four then look at the practice of reviewing relative pay rates by ethnic background. And there's no statistically significant interaction term in that specification. And then columns five and six repeat the same thing with formal job evaluation. And again, you will see we get a positive and statistically significant interaction term down in the bottom of the table. So in workplaces that have formal job evaluation, the ethnic wage gap is around six, seven percentage points smaller than in workplaces without formal job evaluation. Now, in those six columns, we're only entering the practices one by one. But in the final columns, seven and eight, we enter them all together. We can focus on column eight. That's the one with the workplace fixed effect. And we see that in workplaces with recognized unions, the ethnic wage gap is around four percentage points smaller than it is in workplaces without. And then going down to the bottom of the table, equally, in workplaces with formal job evaluation systems, the ethnic wage gap is around about four percentage points smaller than in workplaces without job evaluation. So just to recap, we've got linked employer employee data here, trying to look at the role of the workplace in ethnic wage gaps. We find there is a lot of segregation of employees across workplaces, in particular, a large bias towards large workplaces. But the ethnic wage penalty still seems to be mostly a within workplace phenomenon. And and that's very similar to what's been found in other countries. We present some evidence that's consistent with unequal treatment. So ethnic minorities are less satisfied with their pay than whites after conditioning on variety of other factors. And ethnic minorities also more likely to feel over skilled in their roles than white coworkers. And then we identify two workplace practices that seem to be associated with smaller ethnic wage penalties. So the recognition of trade unions, and we can look there to the literature on unions as a sword of justice, putting, trying to ensure that wages are tied to observable factors of employee skill. And also the use of job evaluation schemes, which try to evaluate the comparable worth of different roles and tie wages to their the job's value rather than to individuals. And so in summary, we would say that this evidence suggests more attention should be placed on ensuring fairness in wage determination. And that's where I'm going to stop. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you very much, John. We have a question in the chat, which is pushing back on the idea that you said at one point that your results were consistent with Carl's. The person is asking whether or not, in fact, Carl was saying that taking account of selection into firms is really important in understanding the gap, whereas you're saying it's really mainly about the within workplace variance. What would you have to say to that?
I think it partly depends where you start from. So if I go, if we go back to what Carl was showing, there are very heterogeneous wage gaps for different ethnic minority groups. Okay, and I think what Carl showed is that generally, his firm fixed effect was above the line. Yep, so mostly that firm effect is masking what is effectively for most groups are within workplace wage penalty. So I think you get a similar message across those two presentations. In Carl's presentation, most of his coefficients red lines were underneath the the axis. Okay, so that what I would say is there's huge heterogeneity in the raw gaps. A lot of that is about firm. But actually, for most ethnic minorities, there is a within workplace wage penalty. And I could show, I didn't show you the heterogeneity. But yeah, I think it 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 depends in a part where you're where you're starting from. And obviously, with Carl's data, he's able to split it up into different ethnic minority groups. And if I showed you those statistics where we have split it up, you would see that the workplace matters differently for different groups, but there is a within workplace wage penalty for most of the groups, I think, in in either analysis ultimately.
Okay, very useful. Carl, tell me if there's any questions in your room. Meanwhile, I have one obvious.
Might want to disagree. I'll give him right of reply.
I think I think it's just heterogeneity, right? We, I can, I can show you the results for the mean from our stuff. I just didn't present them. And at the mean, across all, it's going to look very similar to what John says.
Okay, that's really useful. John, one obvious question is you pushed a little bit on the the policy inferences, but of course, job evaluation schemes and union recognition are not randomly assigned across ethnic minorities. So what would you say to that?
Yeah, I'm not I'm not likely to be prescribed either by policymakers. But to the extent that our analysis suggests that there are ethnic wage gaps amongst observation observationally equivalent coworkers within workplace, it seems to be that a lot of this ethnic wage penalty is coming from the wage setting process. So anything then that policymakers can do to encourage employers to look at their wage setting processes more carefully than they have done would be beneficial. And there are many, I mean, there are not many, but there are different ways policymakers could encourage employers to do that. Transparency might be one. We've seen that that's been somewhat effective on the gender wage gap. You know, policymakers haven't told employers necessarily how to set wages for men and women, but by going through the gender pay gap reporting process, they've encouraged a lot of employers to look a bit more carefully at their wage statistics than they would otherwise have done. There've been a lot of people pushing for ethnic pay gap reporting. In fact, I think the government recently said they're not going to do that, which I think is unfortunate, actually.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay, I thought they were still consulting on that. So that's, I didn't realize. Let's let's now, in the last couple of minutes, I'm still looking at the Q and A stuff in case somebody pops something in. But perhaps you'd like to reflect on one another's thoughts a little bit. We've got a couple of minutes to go. Steve, have you got any thoughts on what you've heard from the others?
Well, I was just actually picking up on just what John said there about reporting the ethnic pay gap. I mean, one of the, I don't necessarily agree, but the pushback on it is it's not similar equivalent to doing the gender pay gap, where it's almost fifty fifty, slightly statistically. You can have outlier, like in the the distribution that you were showing. You know, you can have some burns where there are no no ethnic minorities or one. So it's not reporting equivalent thing. Would you say that almost the argument is that just having the mechanism in itself is would act to change firm behaviour? In terms of wage setting?
Well, I guess, what, I suppose what's, what you want to do is to is probably to push firms who wouldn't ordinarily look at their wage data. I mean, actually, we we've got this indicator in the survey of whether employers have been reviewing their relative pay rates and those that do, it doesn't seem to make a lot of difference. So that might be an argument for saying, well, look, you know, transparency is pointless. I mean, of course, transparency is pointless unless you do something about it, isn't it? There's no point collecting the statistics unless you then go and try and ask the question why. But I think one one thing that the the gender pay gap reporting process has done is enable people outside the firm to to apply pressure. Now, I accept what you're saying, with ethnicity, that's more difficult because you do have some issues around, you know, what you can publish without giving away people's salaries. But for large firms, I think that's not a huge problem, actually.
We should ask Carl for a final word, but remember, everybody, if you want to get in touch with these people directly, I think they've all left their contact details on the platform, so you can follow up afterwards. Carl, any final thoughts?
Well, the evidence from the gender pay gap reporting which has come out so far, based on the, is that it did have, it does appear to reduce the gender wage gap. And the problem was because they set the threshold so low, which is great, of course, but for us as researchers, that I don't think has been able to identify whether that happened within the firm or just as an aggregate effect, you know, people moving across firms, you know, people coming aware. So if they, yeah, it's, it's hard to say whether it gets at what John's finding in the results, right? Whether the pay gap reporting even addresses that, because it could be, you know, awareness by the work of the workers themselves that there are pay gaps within their own firm precipitates them, well, I'm not staying here then.
Yeah.
If I see that nobody in higher management now is 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 female, I'm not staying.
Particularly large. My my thought about this is that if you believe correspondence studies, there's a lot of hiring discrimination by ethnicity going on in Britain and it's been constant ever since the introduction of the Race Relations Act. And so this raises interesting questions. There are a bunch of intolerant employers out there. So there will be probably sorting by firm according to perceived tolerance of employers and therefore employer signaling is going to matter for the sorting of workers. I also assume that if if there is some discrimination on the hiring front, it's liable to occur in the wage setting domain as well. But of course, we haven't been able to say anything directly on that today. Anyway, we've run out of time. Thanks very much, you guys. I thought that was actually a terrific session. I really enjoyed it. And don't forget, you can listen back to it because it's been recorded. So thanks very much, everyone.
Thank you. Bye.
Thanks, Alex, for sharing.
Excellent. Thanks, John.